Hi, good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Southborough School Committee Wednesday, April 13th, 2022 at 6:31 PM. We have a quorum. First order of business is public comment. Okay, saying then, we'll go into new business. Superintendent?
So, the first item on the agenda is update from principals. So, we have Principal Ryan and Principal Mucci who will provide an update this evening.
Thank you, Greg. I'll start off. I'd like to start by thanking the Finn School parents in the Southborough community for their unbelievable generosity in making our dance fit SOS fundraiser a huge success. We were hoping to raise $15,000 and we actually raised $24,000. So, we're incredibly grateful. Another big thanks to Nia Benoit and the rest of the Finn SOS team for organizing the event. Students had a great time. Staff had a great time. It was a lot of fun. Other happenings at Finn, we had two days of very successful parent-teacher conferences on March 31st and April 1st. It was great to see parents back in our building and parents were thrilled to be able to walk around our school, see their children's classrooms, and be back to kind of a sense of what we had pre-pandemic. Finn School staff has been very busy over the past month. A group of us attended the kickoff for the Coalition of Equities Community Speaker Series last Thursday night, featuring Jennifer DeLeon. Jennifer is an author, Southborough parent, and she highlighted the power of each person's individual story. Jen's presentation was excellent and her story was very eye-opening. With the guidance of Dr. Reinhorn, several Finn staff members met and identified social studies power standards released by the Department of Education and Secondary -- no, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Strike that from there. Grade teams met earlier today to review the resources that are currently used to teach these social studies standards and identify existing resources and any additional resources that are needed. We've also started working on drafts for our master schedule for next year and placement for kindergarten to grade one and grade one to grade two. We're also gearing up for our in-person kindergarten screening and kindergarten orientation taking place on May 3rd, 4th, and 5th. Parents who have registered their child for kindergarten will be receiving an email in the next day or so with more information. I mentioned last month that Jennifer O'Connor-Lipton gave a whole staff presentation on the adoption of an SEL screener, something I believe Jen will discuss in a little bit more detail in a bit. And I'm happy to report that all teachers in K and grade one have completed the screener and will be discussing the results at a staff meeting in a few weeks. And speaking of SEL, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released their SEL resources for grades one through three on their website a couple of weeks ago. And our district was recognized by DESI on their website for the work and the contributions we made to the SEL resource development. Pre-pandemic, a small group of us, Northborough and Southborough Elementary, grades one through three, volunteered to review and try out one or more of the 13 different resources, SEL resources, over the course of a year, and then we reported back to the SEL committee. Continuing with the SEL, staff read recently and discussed the book My Brother Charlie to highlight individual differences during Autism Awareness Month, which is the month of April. In this past Monday, we had a whole school care presentation and the theme was perseverance. In other curriculum areas, students in preschool just finished a unit on the solar system and they created their own planets. Preschool researchers discovered several new planets. One planet named Bahas is covered in bananas. Another is home to all the Paw Patrol characters. And a third planet is named Flaptune. You can check out a video walkthrough of all the newly discovered planets in the Finn's pre-K universe on our website. Also, in the area of science, students in both K and grade one are working on units in biology and studying the growth cycle or the life cycle of plants and what environmental conditions are needed to help plants grow: water, sunlight, and nutrients. As a whole class, each student planted their own pumpkin seed under optimal conditions and they also planted -- they also attempted to grow three other seeds while controlling certain conditions: one seed without soil, one seed without water, and the other without sunlight. The seed without water, they discovered, did sprout but was stunted in its growth and eventually withered away. The one without water never sprouted and the third without light sprouted and grew in its light-free environment. And to students' surprise, the seedling was somewhat similar in growth to their seedlings that they had grown. However, because it lacked sunlight, the seedling was pale and yellow and wasn't able to produce chlorophyll, which students learned it makes plants green and helps them with photosynthesis. And lastly, we've connected with Chestnut Hill Farm about preparing the soil in our Finn family garden and their donation of some vegetable seedlings to get the garden going. So, there's been a lot happening at the Mary Finn School. I wasn't sure if I should face the camera. For you!
Now that you're facing a camera, it'll be fine.
Okay. Since I did. Ten visions.
Can we redo that?
So, this is not a really serious question, but you've mentioned the pre-K investigating the solar system. Do they know about the comet yet? Or is it?
No, there's been no discussion about it.
Pretty new news.
No, they haven't been talking about it.
Okay, well, it's not really a plan in any case. Any -- any of the committee members have any questions?
There was just a piece in there where you talked about, I don't know if it was just Finn, but being recognized by DESI. What was that for?
Yeah, so actually, it was Steve and the principals in Northborough with ROTA. And we took some SEL resources that were suggested and delivered to the SEL or Department of Education's SEL resource team and they wanted to have them vetted. So, over the course of several months, we took some recommendations, we had teachers try them out, and then we gave them feedback. And because of that, our names are -- not our names, but Northborough, Southborough was recognized on their website for the SEL development, which we're, you know, proud of because it was on there.
Right. You're giving them feedback, but I'm sure that whoever was reviewing it was gaining something too, right?
Right, right, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Want to say it?
Yeah.
So, that was certainly thorough and thoughtful.
Sorry. Just use the word "flaptune."
So, we're really excited to announce that the walking school bus is back at Woodward. This is something that has started years ago and had to take a break due to some circumstances that are out of our control. And Ms. Duggan was a big part of the walking school bus, but we're happy to announce that it's back in action and it's spearheaded by Ms. Kelleher. She has enlisted the help of quite a few volunteer teachers, Ms. McLean, Ms. Robeson, Ms. Goulet, Ms. Good, and Ms. Kylie, who have all been part of it. We all got caught in a rainstorm a few weeks back, which was interesting because we all came back to school like, you know, soaking wet puppies, but it was a great, a great day and certainly added a boost of energy to our morning with students who are walking to school with us, making connections with their peers, but also with staff members. So, we're really happy to announce that that's back in action. Like Clayton had mentioned, we held our parent-teacher conferences the last week of March and April 1st, and they were a huge success. We offered remote conferences as well as in-person conferences and we found that, you know, giving parents that choice has certainly increased participation, which, you know, only benefits students and improves communication between home and school. As part of that, we also had our scholastic book fair that ran during the conferences. There was definitely a desire for the book fair. We had a total sales of over $10,000 in books, which means that books are going directly to homes and students. And there were great donations made by the SOS to purchase books for classroom libraries and teachers so that they could have a diverse range of texts to read with students. I want to give a plug to Lisa Jackman and Kristen Carlson, who are SOS co-chairs. They spearheaded the book fair and put in countless hours of volunteer time for setting up, breaking down, and also manning the book fair, along with tons of parents who volunteered their time and energy. So, we're very grateful and thankful to the Woodward community and SOS. You know, part of those fundraising efforts goes to bringing creative arts presentations into school. When we come back from vacation, we're very excited that High Touch High Tech will be coming for our third grade learners. We've already had the second grade students experience High Touch High Tech this year, but now we're following it up with the third grade presentations on Monday and Tuesday of the week we come back. We had our MCAS, the LA MCAS test administration this week, and it's pretty much wrapped up. We do have some makeups that will happen tomorrow and then the week we come back from vacation, but all in all, it was a success. A huge thank you to John Wiggins and Jen Tracy, who are on site to help deliver tech support and get our test administration ready to go. Also, to Julie Doyle and Amy Benford, who helped me lead trainings for staff in ESPs and near ESPs on our professional development day. So, with all that preparation and teamwork, it definitely went off without a hitch. The two next, the next two updates I want to mention are about Students in Action. And I know that I had presented one on the blue-spotted salamander a while back and Kim, you had reached out actually just for an update. So, I had a chance to speak to Simona and April, who are two students who are spearheading this effort at Woodward. And they are happy to announce that while the bill has not passed yet, it is now in study, which means that committee members are in the research stage of the bill. And once it's voted on in January of 2023, then there will be a final decision on whether or not the state will adopt the blue-spotted salamander as a state amphibian. If it's the will of the committee, I would love for Simona and April to maybe come to a school committee meeting and present some of the work that they have done and provide an update as to where they are in the process. And I don't know if May, if the May school committee meeting would work for that.
Looking at the proposed calendar.
I keep getting a lot of head nods.
Great. I will connect with Simona and April and their parents, but they were super excited to share the updates and very excited to share that a committee member has also co-sponsored the bill, which I think is the next, you know, big step, but I'll leave the rest of them to explain. The other piece of Students in Action is we had three students who met with the medical advisory team, Superintendent Martino and Ms. Duggan, to discuss the potential of a therapy dog at Woodward. And Michelle Carv, the principal of the Melwick Middle School, had presented some information to the students. And I met with the three, Molly, Emily, and Simona, to discuss the ideas and potential for bringing a therapy dog to Woodward. I would love to read a letter, a persuasive letter that they had written, if that's all And Ms. Duggan and Superintendent Martino, please feel free to add anything as well. So, this was directed to Ms. Duggan and Mr. Martino. We think a school therapy dog in Southborough Elementary Schools would be amazing. For example, the dog could go to class, could go class to class. You could also choose a class every week and every day, a few kids could go to, go to the dog with a teacher and put food and water in the dog's bowl. The dogs could be with a lot of kids or just a few kids, depending on the dog's personality. I think it would help the kids for three reasons. One, you could sink into the, into its fur and calm down. Two, we could become responsible by taking care of the dog. Three, the pandemic has been stressful on kids and we think it would really help. We would be happy to raise some money to help the funds for the dog. There are some people in town who may be willing to volunteer with their dogs. Would it be okay if we ask them? And then they also presented some data as to why they think it would be a great, a great cause and a great thing to bring to Woodward. So, we're very proud of, you know, students taking, taking these issues upon themselves and really acting. That's certainly something that we're proud of with Woodward students and all Southborough students. Mary Ellen and Superintendent Martino, did you want to add?
No, I'll just comment that Michelle Carv, who is the principal of Melwick Middle School in Northborough, across our three districts, leads the work of therapy dogs. So, she does help people go through the process of training, getting the appropriate insurance, and making sure that we're following our district policies around animals in our schools. She was very excited and will be connecting with the students, talking about are there any active staff members who potentially have dogs that they would like to go through the process and as a result, hopefully get more dogs, therapy dogs in our schools.
She was going to bring her dog to go visit this classroom?
Yeah.
Students who are so persuasive.
Yeah. It was just, I think, you know, remarkable that students are comfortable and brave enough to bring some of these topics to adults and to kind of advocate for themselves. It's something that we've seen several times over the, you know, what I've been able to present to the school committee, and it happens countless other times in every school in Southborough. And I just think that's a testament to the type of learners that we're all helping to, you know, to foster and bring up.
What kind of data? What kind of data did they present? They had a data table.
Yeah, so the data that--
It was very funny, it was just text data.
The, yeah, the notation, I was not able to cross-check the data to make sure.
I think Michelle verified it--
Yes.
--in the meeting yesterday.
But even just in conversation, you know, that what they're able to pull from the pandemic, it's how it's impacted them and their classmates. And, you know, it's, it has been tough. People from all different walks of life, and I think while, you know, we have social-emotional supports in place and we have the people that we feel can help support students, there are others who, you know, are still kind of rebounding. And I think it's great to see this empathy in students and they recognize it with each other and want to support each other, so.
So, this was a second or third grader?
These were third graders.
Third grader.
Yeah.
I think we should also, like, it speaks to what we're doing in the classroom as well because I have a third grader and they're actually going through that module of writing persuasive essays. And so, to see that these two students said, "Oh, okay, I'm going to take these skillsets," and she followed the procedure in the process and wrote this, I think that's great. And for us as the adults to show them that, you know, if you do the work and have these conversations, like, this could be the result that comes out of it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be so happy to see, like, the full circle moment that comes out of it.
So, I've been in touch with Principal Carv already and we'll talk about next steps and what that could look like for Woodward.
The students are moving on, like, will be in here every next year. So, we did let them know that there would be therapy dogs at Woodward next year.
Do we have a, anecdotally, the, because there's a significant number of therapy dogs in Northborough, aren't there, like, do we, is it working out for us?
Yeah, but I think we've had great success with the therapy dogs that we've had in all three districts. Northborough has more than, not the Legion and Southborough, and it's been very successful, not only for students, but for faculty as well. And it's really helped provide another avenue, another vehicle for students to feel safe, connected, and it's been a great experience.
Mrs. Carv is very invested in, her dream is to have a therapy dog in primary schools. She's slowly getting there. Let us know how we can help.
If I could just add one more piece of information. It was just a recognition of Kelly Kylie, who's our school nurse, and all the school nurses across Southborough. But, you know, while we may be, you know, on the other side of the pandemic, there's certainly, you know, a great deal of time and effort and energy she puts into everything that happens around Woodward School. COVID-related, but also just to be a caregiver and a support network for students. So, just wanted to give Kelly a plug. She's been doing an amazing job.
I have an odd question, but it's a serious one. You mentioned MCAS, and I think you concluded by saying it was a complete success. So, I'm just curious, how you measure success, or what would, what would happen that would cause you to say, "Oh, this really was not a success"? Is there, go through the process? I'm just curious.
That's a great question. I guess what I was referring to, the administration was a success. Anytime that's happening online, there are things that could go wrong, there are glitches that could take place, there are accommodations that should have been marked but weren't, and that impacts the testing environment that a student would encounter. So, all of that ran relatively seamlessly. You know, a glitch here or there, but nothing that needed us to stop testing or restart the process. When you have 130 kids taking the test at one time, and it's high stakes, stake testing, you want to make sure that it's, it goes smoothly and that students can have the best opportunity for success. And we feel like the tech staff and all the Woodward, excuse me, Woodward teachers and staff had gone through the process and prepared themselves and also students for the, for MCAS.
Yeah, so you all want a process problem to create a disadvantage for any of the students?
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Principal Mucci?
No.
All right.
All right, so next on the agenda is a presentation about social-emotional learning. And this evening, I'm thrilled to welcome Dr. Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor to the committee. Dr. Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor is the social-emotional learning coordinator, and it's hard to believe that she began in her role and capacity in July. She's made this tremendous impact in a short period of time. She has a high degree of expertise, and I'm excited for her to present her work and the district's work at the start. You're welcome.
Thank you. I just want to thank the committee for the opportunity to share some of the work we've been doing across the district this year. So, I think social-emotional learning is one of those things that we all are familiar with. We all are social creatures, we all have emotions, we interact with each other, but I think it's something that is occasionally hard to define, so I always like to start with a shared definition. So, we use the CASL frameworks. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with CASL, it is C-A-S-L, which stands for the Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning. And I just want to point out that CASL here is different than the CASL program, which is one of our NSborough special education programs. So, I'm not talking about that CASL. I'm talking about the C-A-S-L today. So, the definition of social-emotional learning is listed there. It's defined as the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, to manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. So, kind of a pretty broad definition, and I think it's something that we can all think about from a developmental lens, thinking about our youngest learners up through our kids entering high school and beyond. So, the CASL framework is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to help schools use evidence-based programs to create social-emotional learning in their schools. So, it's not a specific curriculum that schools adopt, but it's really a framework with some resources and tools that can really help schools and communities guide the work. So, here's one of the images that you'll become more familiar with. This is one of the CASL framework model images. So, you can see there's five core competencies here. We have self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So, you can think about those five core competencies being taught to students within classrooms. And then you can see in that image, it expands out and we think about not just our classrooms, but our school community and culture, our partnerships with families, and then extending out into the community, community agencies, et cetera. So, we've been doing a lot of work across the schools in Southborough this year. I believe I've been in each school twice now, two different staff meetings at each school, to share out this framework. Some teachers are more familiar with it than others. This set of competencies and the language that we're using is new to some teachers, so we're really spending some time breaking these competencies down, talking about what they look like at each developmental level. As we all know here, social-emotional learning is something that our district really prioritizes. You know, we talk a lot about what our graduates should look like, what the skills we want our students to possess, and social-emotional learning is definitely a priority across all of our strategic plans, our district goals. And it's really important to think about social-emotional learning and equity is really being impossible to separate. They're really so linked together for us. You have to think about social-emotional learning in order to create equitable schools. And you can't really have equitable schools unless there's good social-emotional learning programming. So, they really go together very nicely. And if you remember back to the equity audit that was discussed last month, I think number two of their recommendations was focused on social-emotional learning in our schools. It's important to think about how all of our teachers, right, all the adults in our buildings are here for our students, are here to create those positive and safe learning environments. So, really, all educators are responsible for social-emotional learning, but we also do have some staff who are really dedicated just to this work. So, those include some of our school counselors, our school psychologists, our behavior specialists and BCBAs, our nursing staff, they are very important, not just for COVID, but for wellness in general. And I think, you know, all of our staff, including our coaches, our ESPs, our office staff, all the support staff, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, you know, really, all the adults play a really important role in our students' social-emotional well-being. Some of the work this year has included, as I've said, really developing the shared understanding of social-emotional well-being and making sure that we have a lot of the same language. We've been able to provide many professional development opportunities for staff this year focusing on SEL. We're doing a lot of work inventorying what's currently being done across the schools. And one of our big projects is really to look at the four schools in Southborough and look at the programming and the language and really trying to make sure that we have some consistency across the different schools. We're also starting to look more at our data collection methods, which I'll go into in a moment in more detail, and really start to use more data when we make decisions about our social-emotional learning programming. So, one of the things I wanted to share about today that Principal Ryan had mentioned was we've recently been working on implementing a universal social-emotional screener. So, it's similar to some of the literacy screeners that we do. We do a lot of health screenings in schools, vision screenings, meliosis screenings. So, the idea of a social-emotional screener is to really collect data on a large number of students to determine if there are any students who might need additional support and then also to determine areas of larger need and trends in our schools. So, it'll allow us to look at grade-wide trends, building-wide trends. Do we have certain areas of need? You know, our, our third graders, it sounds like they're really good at persuasive writing, but maybe there's, you know, other areas that they struggle with. So, this kind of screener will allow us to look at each grade, look at classrooms, and really make some decisions about areas of need that we can then target more directly. And I really do want to thank all of the teachers who participated in this because I think it was definitely something that was new to our teachers. It was something that for some of them felt a little bit outside of their, their normal comfort zone for what they're used to doing. And I just, I really want to thank all of the teachers who were, you know, open to this, willing to, you know, do this work to support their students. And I also do want to thank all the principals and Superintendent Martino, of course, Assistant Superintendent Reinhorn is not here tonight, but she has been instrumental in making this work happen. So, the screener, some of the schools, I think Principal Ryan said that the Finn School has completed the screening. Some of the other schools will be continuing to do it through the break and then for the first week after the break. And we're really looking at this as a piece of data that goes with our, our data-informed practices in general. So, I know that Maggie Kelty and our math coordinators have recently presented to you all on some of their work with data and making decisions. with data, really making decisions about practices based on data. And this is another piece to that puzzle. And what's interesting, I think, for us to think about is how we can now use this new information from the screener along with some of these other pieces of data that we've had. You know, this year was the first year. Now that we've done the Metro West Health Survey in a couple of years, we were able to do the ESPERT again this year, which is the screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment. It's the substance use screening that the state of Massachusetts requires us to do. So this year we conducted it on our seventh graders. We also have the data from the Equity Audit, which has a lot of information relevant to our SEL work. And then the other types of data that we've always looked at, things like attendance rates, grades, discipline referrals, MCAS, requests for therapy dogs, all those kinds of things that we always look at. So it's really exciting to be able to really look at all of these things and really gather all of that information from our students and really think about the whole picture of the child. Some of the other areas, a focus that I wanted to mention that we're continuing to work on are, you know, as we all are aware of, just meeting our students where they are, meeting the needs of all of our students and staff and families. You know, we know that there's been a lot of stressors for a lot of families and students. And we're just trying to meet our students where they are and give them what they need. We know that many of our students are continuing to struggle with things like anxiety and social isolation. Some of our older students, we've been seeing more school avoidance. So those are always things that we're trying to work on. We're also trying to bring back some of our programs that had to be put on hold during COVID. And some of those focus on some of our equity and inclusion work. Some of the programs, like Understanding Our Differences is one that we're really hoping to get back, maybe this year, if not this year, definitely next year. And like I said, we've worked to bring multiple professional development opportunities to staff, things like mindfulness, executive functioning, mental health first aid, et cetera. And we continue to collaborate with our community partners and agencies. Mary Ellen and I have recently worked with the towns to submit a few more grants to try to continue some of this work moving forward. So I think, I always go back to the beginning of the school year when our superintendent's theme was connections. And I always try to come back to that. And I think, you know, right now for me, it's really thinking about our students' resilience and those connections and really how do we build on those strengths moving forward? So that's all I wanted to present tonight. I thank you all for the time, the opportunity to share this work and for the superintendent for his leadership. So, any questions?
Could you speak to the screener, what type of items you have on there? And is there a process for referral? Is it like an individual, like if someone gets their referral cut off, they're referred out to?
Yeah. So each principal sent out a notification to parents. And it actually had a link to the actual screener, so parents were able to see it. So it's something that the teachers rate about students they know. So teachers are rating students on a set of behaviors that they would see in the classroom. So it's a Likert scale, you know, never, sometimes, often, almost always. So it's something that we ask teachers to do, not when the students are in front of them, right? Some principals gave them a staff meeting time or other PLC time to complete it. So it's not a performance task that you ask the child to do something. So there are some cutoffs where students either are meeting or not meeting. So, or at risk, not at risk. So there's no, you know, we're trying to look at this as one piece of data in a collection of data. So it's not really, we're not thinking of this as if a student is flagged at risk, something automatically would happen. It's really taking that set of information, having conversations with teachers, looking at the whole picture of the child, and then making some decisions about what the child might need.
Do the parents get the feedback from that screener?
If, if we feel like something needs to happen, yes, absolutely. And what, some of the schools have, are, we've already completed the data collect. At the high school, we are a little bit ahead. So we've already done the data collection and started to look at it. And what we did find is most of the students who are flagged are already students, for the most part, who were on folks' radar, were getting services, were already hooked in with supports. Not all of them, but most of them. And I think what we're also trying to look at is, once we have these trends of data, will, how will that help us moving forward with some of our lesson plans? So we can say, okay, the kids leaving first grade at FIN, moving into Woodward, going into second grade, they're really strong in these areas, but they have some weaknesses in these areas. How do we work with that set of teachers and support staff to get, get those students and teachers ready? So that's some of the hopes and plans coming from the screener.
Maybe, maybe the description should be more evident to you. What is mental health first aid?
So that is a class. It was one of our six-hour PDs where we had a trainer. It's actually a curriculum. So it's a six-hour curriculum for adults to learn how to identify a student or adolescent who might need some support. So things like if the child seems anxious or depressed or is making concerning statements, what to do and how to engage with that child and then seek help. So I think we had about 30 staff who participated in the training during the March PD.
And previously, the Trotter staff did it during one of their PD days because it fit nicely to a six-hour day. Were able to do it over a couple of sessions. So we've done it previously as well.
Thank you.
And do you know, what is the anticipation of how frequently we would administer screening?
Great question. So it was a big investment of time to get it set up and training of the staff. So this year, we're just doing it this one time this spring. But we're also going to be asking teachers and staff for feedback about the screener to try to really get from teachers, how it felt for them to use it, what the data looks like afterwards. And then we'll make some decisions moving forward, how often it makes sense. You know, our first thought is, it makes sense to do it a fall screening and then a spring screening to sort of get, you know, two data points per year. But I think, you know, I really want to hear back from the teachers, you know, what was useful for them, how we can make it better for them before we make those decisions. But I think it would be really helpful to have the spring data again next year because that does help us move the placement as moving forward. Great question.
I have a question about the programs like Understanding Our Differences. And are we thinking about, we want to bring them back, hopefully, hope that this year, definitely next year. Have we thought about the kids that have missed it? And like, are we sort of, have we thought about that basically? Because I think we're having like-
It's so funny because one of our audience members and I were just talking about that before we start. And we were just saying, maybe it could be that the fourth and fifth graders were able to do it since they had missed it. So there's a lot of hopes and it, we also have to see where COVID goes too. So I think, you know, like with a lot of these plans, I think we're always having to be a little flexible. So that would be lovely if the fourth and fifth graders could both do it.
And I think the COVID related, but I think that we, like, I don't think seventh graders have had it. So I think we're missing like a chunk. And like, they're leaving us next year, one more year with them. And so I think that message is like, I mean, even if it doesn't get delivered in this way, like that kind of experience is something that we should consider sort of in the portrait of the graduate of, you know, leaving our district, right? So they have this-
And I think you're right. You know, when we think about, you know, inclusion and equity and all of those things, it's not just a one program for fourth graders that's going to do it, right? It's the continuum and how do we always continuously build those things in? I think that's true. There's some programs that we've been looking at in some of the elementary schools, some other programs for anti-bullying and all. So those are some things I'm working on moving forward, some other curriculum around those kind of things.
And I had another question about the bullet, nurturing adults has significant positive impact, like love, right? Like, how is that driving your work or like, do you, like, how, how?
The connect, those connections?
Yeah, how making that happen?
I mean, that's what we do as educators, right? I mean, that's our first job as educators is to make those connections with our students. So I think, you know, that's for all of us. And it really looks like right words to respond to. You know, I think that's all of our jobs, right? Our first job is always to make our students feel welcome and safe and that their teachers want them there and they're part of the community. So I think, you know, we do not want the moment kids step off the bus.
And do you talk about that's my question, like, do you talk about this?
I mean, there's a tremendous amount of research around, you know, a positive, highly qualified educator and the impact that educator has on a student, not only in academic achievement, but also socially and emotionally. So it is something that we spend a lot of time talking about with our educators around the impact that they have working with our students and being mindful about what that impact is and how to approach the work and approaching it, you know, with evidence-based practices that really help support building relationships and making connections with kids.
And if I can take it a step further even, when we've been talking about the CASL framework, it's also a lot about the adults and their own awareness of their own competencies, which I think right now during the pandemic, when there's a lot of stress with the adults, it is something that we are explicitly talking a lot about. You know, how do we manage ourselves as adults so that we can model that for students as well? So it's kind of loops all around.
And I'll add to that. You know, I just think that the connections that our teachers make with students are so essential. I think one of the positive components of this screener is that it really focuses every educator, not just in South, but across the district, to focus in on a single student at a single point in time and really think about that student. So just by the nature of having a screener, in particular, I would say at our elementary school, you know, our elementary teachers spend all day with the students and they make connections. When you get to the middle school, you have 112 students. When you get to the high school, you have more students. And it's really helped teachers focus in on some of these questions in each individual student. It's more, never been more important that we have this data to make decisions. We all, we hear the news that kids are struggling socially and emotionally. And it's important that we have a baseline that will actually think about how we're making impactful changes for kids.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
And I just want to, you know, again, I think that Jennifer's part of a larger teaching and learning team than Dr. Ryan Horn. It's a very powerful, exciting group who's done a lot of nice work. And their work really is to support the work that happens in classrooms and support and service of teachers. And I think that whenever we're thinking about launching something or implementing something, we always try to think about the impact it has on a teacher because teachers are extremely busy. So I think your comment around, you know, getting feedback and input from our educators around, is the data helpful? How's the data used, when, is really essential. And I just want to thank our educators because although Jennifer's new to her role, but our work around SEL is not new to our teachers and the work that we do as a district. And what we're hoping to do is bring more appearance to our consistent language and consistent approach so that as a result, students can, it's a great impact for our schools.
Can I ask, when you're looking at the data in terms of, you know, using it as a data point, are you comparing like individual growth or are you looking at group, between groups? Or how is that data, how are you going to look at that?
Yeah, I think it's triangulating the data sets that we have. This is one screening data, but also looking at other data sets that we have, like academic achievement and the local data. There's all sorts of data sets. I don't think this is, this is a singular data point that we'll be looking at. I don't know if you want to-
Yeah, I'll say.
You said?
Yeah.
COVID, 19, update?
Yes, it has. It's the well of the committee. Principal Lucci and Principal Clayton. Exit stage lock, if they wish. It's not as smooth of a transition as it is.
Can't just disappear from the screen.
That's right.
What happens if we're split on this vote? Thank you all. Here are no objections, thank you.
Hey, Patty?
I think you're all.
Okay, all right. First of all, I'm going to start not with COVID, but to thank all the nurses for all they do each, continue to do each day. And between office visits, testing, and COVID, they're all busy finishing up their everyday screenings that we took a break from last year during COVID. And we're back to do a vision hearing, type and weight, and scoliosis. So they're finishing those up. And never did I think they would be happy to do screenings as they are this year. So we better take advantage of it for this year only. And some of them are actually able to get into the classrooms to do some health lessons. I know Steven talked about Kelly, she joined the walking school bus. Saferids to School, which is from the Department of Transportation, backs the walking school bus and walks the bikes and rolls to schools. Nicole Kelleher and I were invited to talk at the community webinar last month about the success of our walking school bus and that it's continued for so many years. So that was a great opportunity for us. Unfortunately, Nicole got pulled at the last minute, so it was just me. Not to COVID. We have seen an uptick in cases. What you're seeing and hearing in the news and you're watching the wastewater numbers, they are going up. Even though our towns aren't in those numbers, we do reflect exactly what they're showing. This week in South Borough, as of today, we had 16 cases. Last week it was nine, and the week before that it was 13. Oh, sorry, I take that back. Last week was 14 and the week before that was 22 in South Borough. I was looking at the wrong ones. So our percent of students who are present in class, you know, the absenteeism, last week was 95.7% of our students were in class, which is great. And the lowest it's been since February break has been 94.8. So our numbers have been pretty high. We did have a cluster of cases in preschool last week where we consulted with the medical advisory team. We did daily, we recommended daily antigen testing of the students and masking for the remainder of the week. And we haven't seen any more since that little cluster then. We have had an uptick of cases at Trotter over the past few weeks. But when we look at the data, there's no real common denominator anywhere. So we haven't considered any clusters happening there. The MAT has still, medical advisory team has been meeting every Tuesday still. We are looking ahead beyond COVID and knowing we are in the throes of the mental health pandemic also for our children. We invited Carrie Tool, who is a local clinician, to join the medical advisory team. She's been with us for the past few weeks. And we will be collaborating with North Borough Family Youth Services and South Borough Youth and Family Services as we think about what we can do to help our parents and our students in this post-COVID world. Our thoughts have been that, and we're in the beginning planning stages, to have a panel discussion, to have discussion groups for parents or coffee groups for parents, a webinar series, and various resource models for our parents regarding all mental health issues, mental health and wellness. Our goal is to do something monthly, starting in May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month. So hopefully, that's what we'll be able to focus on. So hopefully that's what we'll be able to focus on. And our focus will not be totally COVID, which is nice. And everybody's really passionate about it.
Thank you.
I have one. I don't think it makes a lot of difference, actually. I know that Massachusetts itself compared to some larger states like the last week or so was, I think I compared it to Georgia and Georgia was like 500 cases a day for seven days and Massachusetts was 1,500 cases a day for seven days. So is, does anybody have any sense whether this is the Omicron subvariant that's now going around here? And that's why, or as I say, I'm not sure it makes any difference and I'm not sure people really know.
I think the only difference it would make is that if you've had a different variant, you could get this variant, right? So we know that.
Probably get the same variant, right? If it's enough time has passed.
Enough time has passed, yes. I mean, the only thing I've learned in two years is COVID is weird. When we think we have it figured out, it's going to change and we're not going to know it, know what we're dealing with. But there are a few different subvariants that are out there that they're talking about XE and X. You know, so there's a few different ones that they're monitoring and tracking and they're not. So you can do the things that we know that will keep us safe, right?
As far as absences, it seems to not be really negatively affecting us in a serious way so far.
Definitely, we have seen in, you know, others, not in Southborough, but in Northborough, we have seen some lower numbers in the percent present of, you know, the absentee rates have been a little bit higher, but we haven't really seen it here, so.
Has there been any discussion by the medical advisory of needing to increase mitigation strategies with the increasing cases in the school or is that we're going to continue?
So we do it on an individual basis. So we saw there have been a couple of places where we've seen clusters. And when that happens, we do notify the classroom and put in those recommendations, recommend testing and masking. And every time we've recommended it, everybody has masked for the remainder of the week. There hasn't been any problems with that.
Are you, and just related to that, are you seeing, what are the testing rates looking? Because I know that that's, you know, that there's significantly less testing in general, even outside of schools or families going ahead with those recommendations to get testing? Or are you seeing low testing rates?
Our testing rates have stayed pretty stable in the pool testing. We have between 1,100 and 1,200 people participate every week. And that's about what it's been since the beginning of the year almost. Right when we came back during the peak of Omicron, in January, there were probably 13, close to 1,400 people participating, but since then it's been between 1,100 and 1,200 people each week. So I think it's pretty steady. And for the antigen testing, we're not sure who's doing it on Thursdays and we just rely on people to let us know about their positive tests.
When you recommend the daily antigen for like the little clusters, is it in school? Like, are you testing in school or you just recommend they do it at home?
We recommend they do it at home. We send them test kits as if they've opted in so that they can do it daily. And if they aren't able to do it at home, we are doing it at school.
I also just wanted to make a comment that I think it's great that you have a mental health and Carrie's great, so it's good to hear that.
Everybody's very passionate and excited about doing this because this much needed, so. A lot of different groups talking about it in every group I'm in, whether it's with the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, with Jennifer, with the Dwell Northborough, with every group is really passionate about the mental wellbeing of all of our community members.
All right, thank you. Legislative updates?
Yes, so I have a quick update for the committee around three areas that we've been advocating around. The first is the state education funding formula, Chapter 78. So Southborough is a minimum aid community because of its wealth factor. So we receive $30 per student under the current budget proposed. We've been advocating for $100 minimum state aid per student, so that's one area. The second area is for the state to fully fund the special education reimbursement, which is circuit breaker. Every year we're advocating for more money around special education. So that is probably not new news to you folks, but it's something we advocate for. And one area that is new is, I'm sure you've heard that Congress has decided not to fund universal free meals after June 30th. So we've been advocating with our local legislators that it is something that we support the state funding as it moves through that F Y to make a budget process. Keith has learned there potentially is a window opening that maybe Congress may fund a universal free school meals for schools next year. But we're advocating on all pathways that we can. So those are the three areas we've been communicating with our local legislative delegation.
So regarding the circuit breaker, as you said, every year, you know, we make our recommendation and every year at least so far, I don't say we're rebuffed, but it doesn't happen. Is there any particular reason you would think that this year will be any different at all? Or is this just something we need to, well, certainly we'd advocate continuing it, but is there?
I think just the physical condition the state is in is very healthy. So I think there's a lot of advocacy around these items that have not been funded at the promised rate. So I think there is hope. And the second thing I would just communicate is the Student Opportunity Act, which talks about funding education, also speaks to funding special education. So I think there is some momentum. Whether it will happen or not, I'm not sure. But I'm confident that if it will be fully funded, this is a good year for it potentially.
If it was ever going to happen, this is a lot of conditions lining up for.
So how can we support that as a community?
So Keith did draft a letter for the universal free meals that we did, Roger signed, and we sent that off to our local legislative delegation. In terms of circuit breaker, education funding, we've been advocating through our organizations, through MAS C and NASS and also speaking directly with our legislative delegation, both in Northborough and Southborough.
One aspect you talked about was the meals being possibly expiring in June in terms of the beginning. I mean, it just seems like so inconvenient that they would interrupt that prior to the school year finishing? Or is there a vote scheduled?
Did you mean they were?
June 30th.
Right, then I got a lot of it after the school year.
We'll get through the end of the school.
We will get through, okay.
But I think it's been such a valuable program for our families, not only our community, but other communities and families have taken advantage of the free meals. And I think we talk about social, emotional wellbeing, you know, healthy and balanced learners. Food and nutrition is such an important part of that equation. It's something that we feel strongly about if we can support. The other piece of this, which is potentially a general topic for next meeting, is prices of commodities. Food prices have risen dramatically. The cost of the fees for lunch will not support the increased costs of meals. So we have some decisions to make and Keith with the financial team is analyzing the data. Hopefully we will not need to bring this to you because the free meals, the universal free meals will move through fast. So we are, we are looking at the financial impact of increase food costs on our lunch program.
Keith, do you have more participation?
You read my mind, that's exactly what I was going to say. Our participation has increased steadily across the district and all three districts, actually. And we're really seeing that benefit through and through. I was just speaking to a teacher yesterday, I commented, she's no longer seeing students with their heads down on their desk, you know, in the afternoon because they didn't have lunch, you know, which we're always monitoring, but this seems to have removed that barrier and students are able to come up and get a lunch each and every day. And that's been just an amazing benefit to have. And I can't, can't speak enough about the cafeteria stuff. They're now producing more than they ever have before, you know, which is another change we've had to endure coupled with the food costs and things like that. So there's a lot of things to consider. We're trying to put together a nice neat package for you, but hopefully we don't have to do that if the legislation goes through as we're advocating for. So I can't say enough and it is across the board. We are not alone. A lot of districts, I have to consider the meal price increase as well. So I'm talking to our neighbors as much as we can to figure out where we're going to land. But the hope is that we don't have to land anywhere and we can get the free meals to continue.
Yes, and I'm wondering if like you guys, you guys talk sort of around the idea that like the what kids put in their body during the school day really impacts their like ability to take in, like to learn, right? And not only like the opportunity to have lunch, but like what the lunch consists of. And I wonder, like, I think there's a lot of research that talks about like that can really like, even as like their EF skills in the afternoon, like what it looks like when, you know, they eat this thing versus that thing. And I don't know, I mean, like an extra complication, there's like a really basic conversation, but you know.
You have a perfect triangle right here.
Yes, right, right, so.
But I would, I would much rather be focusing on that than worry about what the meal price needs to be in order to sustain the program.
But I wonder if, if it does happen, like if it's another opportunity.
It will be, yes.
To have those discussions because the revenue will sort of be.
And it is part of our curriculum, talking about nutrition and the power of nutrition. So I think it is all connected.
Right.
Fingers crossed.
Okay, so we're going to do the ADA report?
Yes, so I will do a brief intro and then turn it over to Assistant Superintendent O'Leary. So the town commissioned an ADA report for all town buildings, including the schools. We received the results of the report. I believe it was early winter and has a lot of great information and a lot of actions that need to be taken over the next many years. So Keith will share a little bit more about that and what we're thinking our next steps are.
Great, thanks.
Just on your way in, was this through a grant or was this just funded out of the budget?
The town.
The town.
The town.
The town budget.
Yes, correct.
And I do believe it was through a grant.
That's what I was wondering.
It's both.
So in, in 2020, the town of Southborough commissioned the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission in partnership with the Center for Living and Working Incorporated and James Maisick Consulting Services to prepare a self-evaluation and transition plan for the town of Southborough to determine the level of compliance under the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA of 1991, also amended in 2008 and 2010. So there's been plenty of things to pay attention to over the years and the different variations of the law. I do want to publicly commend the town for this endeavor and I certainly appreciate the effort it took to complete the report and the subsequent planning that's going to come from it. And as part of the review, the consulting firm also inspected our schools, which we are very grateful to be included with. So in the summer of 2020, a comprehensive inspection was conducted on each of our schools and tours of each buildings were commenced. And as a result, as Greg said, we received a very dense report for the town to consider what its next steps would be to become more in compliance with the varying recommendations that we're providing.
Very dense for the schools?
Schools and all the town buildings as well. So the complete report, but a subsection of that, actually an appendix, was dedicated solely to the schools. And I believe a copy is in the packet.
Yeah.
Okay. It's very, very dense and good bedside reading if you care to enjoy it. So we have done a preliminary review of it and have dug into the many recommendations that have come through. And the one thing that Greg mentioned at the end is, you know, now that we have these recommendations, what are we going to do with it? So I am working closely with our facilities manager, Brian Fantoni, and the head custodians. And we are inspecting each school's report. And anything that can be included as part of our normal maintenance cycle, we are including at virtually no additional cost because we can include it in with our, with our regular schedule. The other side of it is there are a lot of recommendations that would be quite expensive. And just as a quick summary, we did a little calculation. And if you added up all the recommendations, it would be over $1.5 million in total. And those would be more extensive types of things like the adjustment of plumbing fixtures, which as we all know, if we try to do it to our houses, is not a cheap endeavor. On the other side of it, if we needed to move signage from one height to another, that's something that can be done relatively simply as long as it's done in a complete plan. So as we are unpacking that, that's the type of delineation that we want to make and work very closely with the town to make sure that we're, you know, coming under as much compliance as possible. The other part of that is that we are focusing on the Finn School and Trotter School to make sure we focus on those two buildings as the bucket of, the majority of the recommendations were for Niri, which we did expect, which we've discussed as part of our Niri Building Committee and other things that were projects that we have on the docket. So that's going to be our strategy. And I do, I do expect that when the summer comes, we're going to be able to tackle more of those individual recommendations and I'll be able to report back in the fall with progress against the report.
So I went back a long ways with ADA. Hopefully my wife won't see this broadcast, but she was actually the chairman many years ago. One of the frustrations at the time, I can say this because there really aren't any sort of the boards, the select board is different and there's sort of not a lot of people doing the same thing that they were back then, was a number of issues were identified, but there's nothing, I was going to say not all, but a number of issues were identified and they weren't rectified. And I know there's, in some cases, there are fines related, okay, to not doing certain things. So my question is, but I was focused more back then on town buildings and not schools. Since the town owns the school buildings, if there's something that is identified that's not taken care of, is it the town who owns the building culpable or the school culpable? I'm just curious how that, how that connection is made.
It is the district's.
So it's the district's responsibility based on a finding like this to deal with that?
Yeah, and I think there's some language around, you know, what is required to implement. And it does talk about, you know, we do have to consider the financial impact of implementation. So, you know, as we look through the report, there are many items that are zero or a very small cost that we can move forward with without significant financial impact to the overall district. So those are the types of things that Keith is assessing with Ryan Fantoni. And I also think it's important to look at this report in context to larger planning. So obviously we've had a lot of conversations around the Niri Building Project. It does not make sense to invest a million dollars in making Niri ADA compliant at this point in time because if there is a project or a decision made, it will be brought up to compliance through that process.
Okay, this might be out of order, but I can call myself out of order. Tim, do you have something to add on this or not? I'm just looking out there and this is a particular topic that we're talking about now. Yes or no?
I could, but I'm interested. Well, so first in terms of how the report was funded, there was a town meeting article to do the Title II study. That was funded. The grant was subsequently obtained from the Mass Office on Disabilities that funded the town portion. And then actually as a result of some prodding from me, I kept asking, well, what about the schools? And the first response. And the first response was, well, they have a study. And after some further inquiries, it turned out there wasn't. So the money left over from, originally going to do the whole study is what generated the appendix. So that's sort of how we got there. The second thing I guess I can add is that the town now on a fairly regular basis is putting $50,000 or so into capital for addressing ADA issues in the town buildings and the recreation things. And I guess the third thing that may not be obvious is that the committee that Karen had been involved with years ago was disbanded, dissolved, and turned into a standing committee. This was another one of my side efforts. With the support of the previous committee. So it's now a standing committee. It has a small budget and is much more active than it has been in the past. And Keith was at a recent ADA committee, or it's not ADA committee, it's not public accessibility.
Public accessibility.
One of the things that we did in changing the committee over was to focus on accessibility beyond ADA. I think one of the deficiencies in the report is that it focuses a lot on doorknobs and plumbing and, you know, physical access and doesn't address many of the, you know, things like access to electronic media, how notices come out. There've been a particular focus of mine for the past 30 years.
All right, interesting, thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, the report, is it, are the recommendations to bring to compliance? Or are they only up to compliance or is it sort of like also, you know, this would be nice?
It's compliance.
Is everything, is everything compliance?
So like for example, the buildings that we're focusing on, Trotter and Finn.
Yeah.
Were built in 1998. And as we referenced, these things have been updated since.
Um, and then have you looked through the report with the lens like from our students' point of view? Like are there things that are impacting them?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that because I can speak about my time here at Trotter.
Yeah.
And at any point in time when a student came in that needed any type of adjustment made for accessibility, it was made. And I shared the story with Tim at the meeting that we had a student that would been, was far more successful on the first floor. So we moved teachers' classrooms through the course of the three years so that their complement of teachers was on the first floor to accommodate that, as an example.
Yeah.
Um, you know, another example is the purchasing of furniture so that it can be adapted properly. That, those are the, those are the easy things that aren't necessarily, you know, a placard that's on the wall.
Right.
You know, one thing that was identified in the report is that our lockers here at Trotter are at very high shelving. Well, we've had a mobile shelving that can be put down at a lower level, but that's not the locker that they opened.
Right.
So I could say that the individuality that's created, you know, whether a student is on a 504, any type of accommodation at all is really individualized. But what the things that Tim is saying, and it is very important, is to make sure that we do have that accessibility for all and it doesn't have to be always specialized. And I think that's a very, you know, it's an excellent angle to look at this from. So as we are reviewing it, we can check a lot of the boxes with very basic, simple things. But when we start getting into the more elaborate recommendations that come with the bring of compliance, that's when we're talking about the capital, you know, investment and planning, you know, that we need to make. And Niri is the perfect example because the vast majority of the larger ticket items are down the hill. Which, which is good because the facilities conditions assessment that we did last year parallels this report. So a lot of things that they pulled out of that, there weren't many surprises because I just read that six months prior with that report. And that was refreshing to know that they were looking at it through a similar lens.
And were you going to say something?
I was just going to say, you know, as a comparison, in order to bring Trotter to compliance, it's $96,000.
Yeah.
So I think being targeted and thinking about the student, the impact to the student is a great way, is a great lens to kind of look at this.
But can you clarify whether or not, so now that we have the report and we know what we should be doing, what happens if those things aren't done? Are there penalties and what's kind of the next step to it? Are there timelines for making everything compliant?
Yeah, so there is a standard in ADA law around, you know, what we need to do. And then again, there's a financial standard around that's feasible and financially achievable by the community. So I think it's a bit of gray area. It's, you know, we don't, the goal is to become compliant and having planned to move in that direction and making sure our capital plans and so forth are to build that, that forward movement. I don't think that, I'm not concerned about being fined because we are going to be making progress in many of these areas.
One of the interesting things is when you're talking about Niri, but I don't know what's going to happen. When you look at a renovation versus a new, if you, if you're sort of maintaining old things, you have more leeway than if you're doing something new. But if you go in too much, then you have to bring everything up to code anyway. So to pretend that a renovation is not going to cost a lot compared to new sometimes is, is not true. Because if you have to go in and bring everything up to code in an old building, the economics may say you may as well do something new.
So what we're hearing from you is that you intend to make progress?
Yeah, they have a, you know, obligation to, we have this great information. There are many areas we can move forward with and we intend to, in a plan for and mind for.
And I'll be able to report back in the fall with progress that we've made over the summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Recreation Department, I don't?
Sure, I'll turn it over to Keith to give a brief history of the requests from the Recreation Department.
Yes, so the Recreation Department came to us a few months ago asking for a letter of support. And this came from the Community Preservation Commission. They had applied for funding through the commission to resurface the tennis courts at the Finn School. And it wasn't just the resurfacing, it was the removal of the remainder of the skate park that was there and also to do a complete resurfacing, including both tennis and pickleball. So some people really love pickleball around here. So there, there is a need in the community for this and this has been going through Tim Davis, our Recreation Director. And he came to us for our, our support. So we had the opportunity to discuss the, you know, a project in greater detail, also review things like accessibility to the courts because it's not necessarily right off the parking lot. So a lot of different things are being considered for the project and, you know, Tim really wanted our endorsement and support. So that's why Greg and I wanted to bring it to your attention, answer any questions, and then provide him the support that he requested.
Do they take this on meeting or do they do it?
They already did, correct?
No, they're going.
They're going, it's on this, yeah, that's right.
I think the, the support that they're looking for is they can say, we have support of the schools, the school communities. And I think also this does benefit the students, you know, during PE classes and so forth. So it is.
How much should I ask them for?
Helpful.
Is that very easy?
I can find out.
I'll find out, I might be able to find out for you now. Tim, are you watching? I'll find out for you.
So I noticed you looked across the room when you mentioned pickleball. I should point out, and I'll look back your direction and not across the room, some tennis players that, that have said that resources are being diverted for pickleball.
That's why they're doing both tennis and pickleball at that location.
I have no idea what pickleball is.
It's like human-sized paintball. That's the easiest way to describe it.
Is it just how they paint the lines?
But you could use those.
Just how they paint the lines, they can use the same.
Yes, you just paint the lines.
Paint the lines.
Within the circle.
Two sorts of lines.
It's the fastest growth sport.
Really?
Did that cover both line items on record or not?
So we have a letter that we will submit to the chair to sign electronically on behalf of the committee. I think it's your vote.
Objections?
No objections.
No objections?
And I'm looking at the application now and it's just under $62,000 for the total renovation, which was better than I thought.
School choice discussion?
Sure, so.
So kind of, you want to level set the, so we have a discussion this evening and then we have a further discussion and a vote at the May meeting, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is.
So I believe, I have my districts confused at times. I believe I presented the school choice information at the last.
You did.
Very memorable presentation. And I think my recommendation was for the public schools of Southboro to opt out of school choice as a result of the reimbursement rate of $5,000 per pupil compared to the actual cost of educating a student in Southboro. And secondly, I think the last thing that we need to do is increase our class sizes as a result of adding more students. I think it's really important to maintain as low of class sizes as we can in this environment as we're talking about SEL and building relationships. And if you look at the data, our class size data and our projections for next year, I don't think there's a lot of space for school choice students. So there needs to be a public hearing, which will take place in May. And then the school committee needs to, if it chooses to opt out or need to vote to opt out of school choice, if it wants to admit to offer school choice, it just needs to do it.
I have a question. I have a question.
Comments now and we'll have time to comment next month too.
Yeah, so I wondered if you could speak to, I know some schools that participate in school choice and some schools that have to participate in school choice, like they're really looking at the numbers of the capacity of their services, right? And I just want to be clear that I'm assuming we don't really have that capacity? Like we don't have any access capacity or enough to sort of?
Yeah, so I would, I think if the funding formula for school choice, there was parity, you know, you receive, district would receive the actual cost of educating a student, many more districts would choice. I think the funding formula is off. And as a result, you know, because it is a lottery and although this committee puts about a five grade or a number of students, really the student that could enter your system could be anywhere along in continuing the behavior and so forth. And as a result, that one student could require a lot more services that we would need to provide.
And is there no adjustment for like, say it was like a lot of challenges or?
So it's $5,000 for a student who just not received special education services. It's $7,500 for students who guys receive services. So the differential is not that much.
Um, and then my other comment is, I guess sort of like with us, is that after the equity audit presentation, I feel like that this is not, the way I mean is that we need to sort of like look there and make sure that we're providing everything that all of the kids need already in our district before we open it up to other schools.
So I've always been a little conflicted on this issue. It's clear to me that the way to make this work is to get after the state on the funding because that's really the way to potentially open this thing up a bit. However, and, and the other aspect that is somewhat, it's somewhat concerning is I think folks who might involve, really want of, of doing as good a job as we can in special ed, whether it's going through our own resources or if we have to go out of district, okay, we do. The $2,500 addition, it's, it's, it's not a bullet point on the radar.
For three weeks.
Especially, especially, and if there could be an accommodation made there also.
Yeah.
Because, because to take on the obligation for another district is really what you're doing. That really is their obligation. There needs to be something built into that structure to be fair for everyone. You, if you, if you bring in someone that, a child that potentially needs a district support, which comes in in the first grade, you've just taken on a huge financial burden, not that the child doesn't deserve it, but you've basically taken it, the burden off of the other town, which is where it deserves.
And also the rest of the, the rest of the school population sort of like takes that on. So we have, we have a responsibility to.
I agree.
The folks who are already here.
That's absolutely true. So I guess other comments, other comments tonight because certainly we can think more. We have the public hearing at the next, I think, in May and Katole will be here also, she may have some thoughts.
Nothing new.
Okay. Now we're to old business, which is the for and after school care program update.
So Keith, I'm up again. So I'm happy to report that a lot of progress has been made as we transition to having the Southboro Extended Day Program under the school. We were able to hire Director Carrie Packard, who is a familiar name. She is the current director of SEDP and will be ours starting on July 1st. So that transition process is, is well underway. And right now Carrie is in the unique position of serving as the director of the current program, the current students, while planning with me for what will become the Summer Fun Club and beyond for the 2022, 2023 school year. And we've made great progress. We're meeting, we're meeting regularly, we're having good conversations. When questions come up, she's asking them, we're not holding back. We've really been able to take care of a lot of these things rather swiftly. So some of the things that are more out there right now is that Carrie has been in contact with all of the current families about what their decisions will be going forward for the 22, 23 school year to secure their registration. So that process is just about complete. I think we're waiting for two families to get back to us. And in that process, they're able to add siblings on to the registration. So we, you know, get a shape of the enrollment for the 22, 23 school year. In combination with that, we did launch the Summer Fun Club out to the community. That was with the support of the principals. We were able to get a flyer out to families and we are receiving registrations for the Summer Fun Club. And things are a little light, but we are predicting that that will start to peak back up once people cycle out of the April vacation. So that seems to be a common thread that, our common trend that Carrie identified. Because I said, eh, things look a little low, not to worry, after April break, we'll see a surge. So that's the type of communication that her and I are having about, you know, what we're doing now to prepare for, for the future. So the other, the next couple of things I want to share are more behind the scenes because we have to do a significant amount of hiring, you know, and we're starting with the summer, well, excuse me, with the site coordinators. So our site coordinators are year-round employees and we are in the final stages of, of bringing them on, on board. So at my next update, I'll be able to identify who they are and they will be starting as of July 1st. But we're in a good position and do have strong candidates for the three that we advertise for. So that process is almost complete. I wish I could share names, but I can't because it's not a done deal yet. So for Niri, Woodward, and Finn. The other thing that is happening is, is very heavy in HR, is making sure that we have a pretty good map of all the positions that are out there for what the current program has and making sure that all of that is transferred into our systems so that we can quickly onboard people once we're able to do the hiring process. So that is quite involved, you know, bringing on a person into the district is not an easy task. Can't just snap your fingers and, and does require a lot of work, both from the central office staff and the candidates themselves. And we're working, working through that quite, quite rigorously to make sure we have the full complement of employees ready to go for the summer. full complement of employees ready to go for the summer, for right now, and then certainly for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So that's a big portion of our work and our focus at this point. The other thing that's behind the scenes is transitioning a lot of the information. They, for many years, use a program called ProCare, which has a lot of the data, a lot of the communication tools. We've adopted that program, now we're trying to move it over to our account. It's kind of like, you know, transitioning between bank accounts in some ways. You know, there is some things that don't always go perfectly and we're working through that. So with, with Carrie and Marge at SEDP, we're partnering with ProCare and our finance team to make sure that we have things set up properly. We've had a couple of things that have been delayed with that and we're hoping that that process is complete within the next couple of weeks. So we had a breakthrough last week and we're hoping that then follows through so that we don't have any missing information that would be helpful to carry over. I think many families are waiting for their first bill for the summer to kind of get that process started, but until ProCare is ready to go, we can't send out invoices for the, for the care. So one will come as soon as that transition is complete. So it has been a very busy, you know, a couple of months from the hiring to the setup behind the scenes and certainly, you know, the outreach that we've made to returning families. And the next step, the next big public announcement will be when open enrollment occurs. So once we assess the spots that are available, that open enrollment will be out within the next couple of weeks, which is consistent with what SEDP has done previously. So we're not late. I know many feel that we're a little late. We're probably two, three weeks behind, but for open enrollment, we've caught up and we're right on target. So Carrie and I are making decent progress. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, I'm sure we're done.
Just about the tools, so things like Power School and Unipay that we are using through the rest of the school system, are they the types of tools that we're trying to incorporate with it?
We are, ProCare does have its, some of its own elements that take care of a lot of that. And then we're trying to figure out where those can merge in well for us and it's advantageous to the families. So, you know, it's, I think people are used to ProCare, there are a lot of elements of it that they really like and that's why we decided to adopt it, you know, for, for this transition. But we haven't worked with it yet, so it's tough to say. And with the little rough start, we're hoping that that's smoothed out quick so that would be an effective tool.
And I heard in there too, where you said just for this transition, so meaning that we could change.
We could.
We could observe, see how it's working and then.
Go in a different direction, correct.
I will share that, that ProCare software, we, and our finance team wasn't so impressed with how it works and how it interacts with families. We actually are using with our preschool tuition.
Okay.
It's something that, you know, we were implementing because it is a user-friendly tool, good for parents.
Can you work on a dashboard, like the data dashboard? I'm wondering if some elements of the extended day can sort of, I'm just thinking of like the goal of like being able to look at like the full like student picture, right? That they participate, how long they participated, you know, like that.
Are you meaning like, so student A, you could see how long they've been in the school system or what?
So I think like that, I think the data, which you were working on before, right?
So I think the idea, well, the concept we're working on is that we have many data points on our students, whether it's achievement data, SEL data and so forth. So having a dashboard where we actually can query and ask questions around the data, but also see a student's story around the student's experience from when they arrive, whether it's before school program, all the way through their day to the end of the school. So as we're making decisions, we see the whole picture of what a student's experience is and whether or not adjustments need to be made and social.
Right, we talked about like bringing like the now employees, the extended day program are like part of the district and so they can have, you know, like can be more privy to that, to like what's going, you know, what's happening.
That's been a key part of the conversation is, you know, what type of professional development's going to be available and how. SEDP does offer, you know, services on our professional development days, so what type of unique strategies are they going to use to get them that type of training? We've already started that conversation. So with Dr. Reinhard, myself and Carrie, we've already, you know, preliminarily trying to map some of those opportunities out and how we can be creative to bridge that difference. So they are genuinely a part of our organization and a part of our school district. And my next thing is I'm going to be connecting with the principals and making sure that staff at each of the schools are brought into that initial faculty meeting and they are welcome as part of our district. So that's all going to add up to, you know, a nice, hopefully a nice data point for our dashboard and, and the other pieces of incorporating the program into our organizations.
Could we also, I was going to ask that question actually, but could we also integrate some of the SEL stuff into the SEDP?
That's what they were most interested in honestly. And I, when I've been interviewing a few of the candidates, that is their exact question. How am I going to be able to get access to that? And I said, we're on it, we're trying to figure out a way to make it happen. So I might be keeping Jennifer busy for the next six months.
And I'm also wondering if too, if that, the, you know, because the staff at Extended Day will be able to see a lot of those domains that maybe, you know, because there's a lot more like social interaction in the after-school programs and getting that information back.
It's going to be critical for that experience to be able to be converted into, you know, what we'd be able to use to benefit the classroom experience. So one is going to be hand in hand with the other is our ultimate goal. You know, those are very macro conversations that we're having and how to bring it into practice is the things that we still, that's not going to be for day one, but that is where we're ultimately want our goals to be.
But I think the screen is a great example where.
Yeah.
The more people, more adults are filling out that screen, how it happens to in different settings, the better data that we have. So I think that's a great example of, you know, the power of this partnership.
And those professional development, you know, having them have access to things like mental health for state.
Exactly.
Oh, oh, the, the open enrollment.
Yes.
So I know at some points in previous years, there've been a waiting list, right? Do we think we're going to have that too or wouldn't be?
At this point, based on what I know so far, is that I do not believe that we would be having a waiting list.
Okay.
You know, that could change. So, you know, depending on, you know.
Like do we know sort of what, like what number we're shooting, like our maximum?
Yeah, those are things that we've, you know.
And has it remained the same? Is it the same pre-district?
We're able to, because now we're under DESI versus the EEC, we're able to adjust that, so we're able to invite more students.
I think too, it's also the pandemic has impacted that on enrollment. And I think we really need to compare pre-pandemic, what their enrollment numbers and waiting lists look like to, I think as we get back to normal, as more and more families go back to work physically and physical locations, I think we'll see in the next year a return to what was a normal type of enrollment and waiting lists.
I see some company partnering us a lot more fully than I would expect it these days, right? Especially considering all the discussion about remote, you know, remote work. A question on staffing, Keith, you mentioned, obviously you mentioned, that's such an important component, not only as a component, you know, of the offering, but also to, to deal with the staffing too. So I am curious about, there've been some folks who've been part of the staff in the past, I guess both during the year and also for summer program. Is there, based on what you might know now, do you anticipate a high percentage will be potentially in the school year staff will also be going forward, school year staff? And the same question I would ask about summer camps, since that's going to be, and that may be a different.
It's a little different.
That may be different. It's a, it's a different.
It seems though that the retention, we're on target for a high retention rate. I can't say that it's going to be a hundred percent because you never know, but we're, we're aiming in a very good direction of that. So, you know, we're expecting a high level of continuity between what's happening presently with what will happen in the future. The summer is always a moving target, so, you know, in talking to Carrie, you know, but, you know, I would say preliminarily, we're, we're happy with, you know, what we've seen so far and the interest level that's there. And we're asking, you know, and we're being asked very basic questions, like how much is it, you know, will be retained, you know? So there are some very basic questions that are, that are happening and we've been able to answer them, but, you know, it's one of those things that Kamali, you made me think of it, is that until the transition occurs and we get through that first leg of a summer camp and then the first semester of next year, we're not going to, you know, be able to definitively say, yes, it is highly comparable to what we've done before, or these are the benefits that we've been able to gain. So I think the patience of the community has been great and they're ready to, you know, trust the care that they're going to be given and we're hoping to deliver on that. So we're, we're in a good shape now, but I'll be like, you know, say a couple of things. We'll be able to report once we get going.
I was going to say, could we also, you know, thinking about the equity audit too, this would be an opportunity to potentially look at some of the recommendations around hiring and to bring people from the community in, starting into the district. And I think this would be a nice opportunity if we could.
Great point.
A good place to start.
Yes. Hiring, so a great opportunity. I have one last question. For the students that you know are coming back, have you thought about sort of like the framework of the process of anybody that, like the whole working together with student support services, like how that looks like proactively, like have we?
Very preliminarily.
Okay.
Because we're still trying to get the nuts and bolts right before we can dive into that type of detail, but that is, I'm staring at it right now. It's on the, you know, it's on the list of things that we're going to be processing once we get a good feel for what the enrollment will be and who will be enrolled, so that we can access those resources as appropriate.
So even, I'm thinking just like the idea of like, okay, a student says, yeah, I'm coming back next school year, like, do we know they have an A in the classroom or they're on an IEP or 504, like do we collect that information in the registration process? You know what I'm saying? Like, do we, even though we might not have had the conversation, have we sort of like set the ramp up?
Yes, we were going to be able to have, once we get the enrollment, have those conversations with the schools.
Okay.
I think we're in a, obviously in a transition period. So we have no staff, right?
Right, there's no one actually.
So we are, you know, we are working in partnership with SEDP to kind of move this transition forward. And I, and I would characterize the work as baseline.
Yeah.
Really getting a good foundation of grading programs we can build upon. So that's been, that has been our hiring, looking at the payment systems, handbooks and all those types of processes.
And technically, you know, Carrie, you know, has been doing a great job during this transition, but will, is a July 1, 2022 employee of the district.
So you would see something like that, like between July, like we're not rolling into like November, like we're still doing it in the program, right? Right, like we're doing, like before the kid opens in the program? Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Yes, so in your package is the enrollment report as of April 5th, 2022. And the only area that we're watching very closely right now in terms of class size is for A2. Right now we have six sections with nineteen students and it's something that we are monitoring closely. There is, depending on what happens with enrollments, we may need to add another section of grade two depending on enrollments as it moves forward. And we have to answer any questions about the enrollment report. Any questions? Also this evening, Becky Pellegrino is on the West Coast, so she is not here obviously, so I'll be presenting the FY22 monthly general fund expenditure report and a grant update.
We should call it really, you want to?
Yes, I have to.
We didn't do that.
Not respecting the times of difference for people. So just in terms of ending balance, ended March 31st, 2022 is two hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred and four dollars or one point zero seven percent remaining in the FY22 operating budget. And compared to last time, last year at this time, the FY21 operating budget had six hundred twenty-three thousand fourteen seventy dollars or two point nine four percent remaining. The finance team continues to monitor it closely, certain expenditures, specifically substitute teachers, custodial contracted services and needing. And again, we're in the last quarter of the budget a year and we're monitoring accounts very closely. And we have to answer any questions around the monthly general fund expenditure report.
You vote to approve? I'm looking at it as the date through March 31st?
Yes.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 22, 2022 monthly general fund expenditure report for the Southboro Schools through March 31st, 2022 until, is there some move?
So moved.
Moved by Kamali, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer, is there any discussion? All in favor? Both, it's unanimous? Grant's update.
Grant, grant's update, so the district continues to work with the programs identified through SR2 and SR3. New expenses for SR2 include the purchase of teacher laptops and student form books. And of the hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars received through SR2, we have expended and encumbered a little under ninety-seven thousand of those funds and we have thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars remaining on the grant. And again, we have until September 30th, 2023 to expend those funds. In terms of SR3, SR3 expenditures include professional development stipends, executive functioning, professional development, offering, additional tutoring materials and early literacy screener and deferral tax purchases. And of the two hundred eighty-one thousand received through SR3 funds, we have expended or encumbered a little under twenty thousand dollars and have two hundred and sixty thousand, a little more than two hundred and sixty thousand remaining on the grant. And again, we have until September 30th, 2024 to expend these funds. And we have been strategic around holding those funds in case we approach a challenging fiscal year and fiscal year 24. So we're trying to be mindful of when we actually move forward with some of those purchases.
But there's plans for spending, correct?
Correct, yes.
On that way, for the tutoring program, is it, was it cost for a program or is it for individual students? There are some new things that had to be implemented and so.
So we did, so this year we have partnered with a tutoring company to provide tutoring services to students based on criteria that was set by teaching my team and principals. As we kind of evaluate the factors of that tutoring program, we are looking at potentially kind of shifting gears for next year and thinking about actually hiring people to provide in-person tutoring. I will share that part of the challenge that we faced this year was just finding people to tutor and it's been really challenging. Some students have had success with online tutoring, others have not, but we're, we're evaluating and thinking about what we're going to do.
And I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but was it spread across like high school or middle school to high school?
So elementary and middle school was the primary tutoring mechanism. And then each community, so the community of Northboro received SR2 and SR3 funds, the community of Southboro, SR2 and SR3, as well as Southboro received its own funds. So hopefully parallel to staying two hundred and four percent of the issues.
I have a question. Has, for these SR grants, has. Has, for these SR grants, has, has any of the actual line items changed?
No.
Yeah, okay.
And by zone?
Right, right.
Looking across the row, again, maybe you said $38,000, then for the SR2. So the, I guess the budget is the same as the amended budget. We expended $43,000 out of it. Okay, all right, we've expended $43,000, we've covered $153,003. I guess that would be the same for, I could call Becky. This is afternoon for her.
Yeah, exactly.
Welcome.
Yes, oh, good, okay.
And lastly, on the superintendent's report is the NEARI building committee update. So the NEARI building committee has held two meetings. The first meeting was primarily to create some structure. Jason Malonowski was appointed as the chair of the building committee and Katora Martin was the vice chair. And the committee had a second meeting, was it Monday?
Monday.
It feels like.
Earlier this week. And basically.
Forever or just yesterday?
I don't know.
This week, earlier this week.
Feels different than that.
And basically, the conversation at that meeting was really preparing for the warrant article for the feasibility study of NEARI school. And really, the purpose of the NEARI building committee in terms of the warrant articles is just to provide education to the community so they can make informed decisions. It wasn't to advocate one way or another. So the committee is creating a one-page summary of the article, the work that has been done so far and where people can find more information. And lastly, a mechanism for people to submit questions that they may have about the article so that the NEARI building committee can get ahead of some of the questions and create an FAQ and respond back to citizens. There was some discussion around, it's been fairly quiet around this warrant article, which is significant. It's $950,000 for feasibility studies. So we're trying to get the word out as a committee to make sure people are informed and have information.
Okay. It was interesting how they, because I was in that meeting, who had determined, if you will, what the parameters around the cost of the feasibility study would end up being.
No, and I think that's a great point, that there was a methodology, the $950,000 is based on comparable projects and feasibility studies. The MSBA website has all of the data. John and you from Vertex actually helped kind of create a potential cost estimate of feasibility. So it's based on some good methodology and moving forward, I think it's a good number.
My only compromise is a little bit of sticker shock, you know, to make sure you.
The feasibility study.
He was very good, he was very good.
The feasibility study, does it live outside, like is the NEARI, potential NEARI school building, does it, is it completely intertwined with the other plans for the towns? Or is it, can it live by itself?
It lives by itself.
Okay.
I think that's a very important question, that it is independent of any of the other conversations that have been taking place at the town level. It is specifically about NEARI and what's feasible in terms of renovation, build and so forth. And I think that it also takes into consideration some of the recommendations, some of the resource that the school committee did and, you know, the school department did around, you know, what would be an ideal grade configuration model that we'd like to see.
But as a building study process moves forward, there'll be some connections, right? I mean, certainly, but that's a really good question.
And that $950,000, you said was explained well in the meeting, in your, on your Monday meeting, in the Monday meeting that you spent on it? Who said that?
So John and you did attend the NEARI building committee on Monday and you did kind of explain the methodology of how that number came to be. And I think part of the work with the NEARI building committee and development FAQ, I think that will be one of the questions.
Yeah, right, because it feels.
I was not, yeah, I was not.
Oh, I see, okay.
In this, this study meeting. This was an earlier meeting.
I see, okay.
Too many meetings, right?
It was the subcommittee that preceded.
Okay.
And I think that, I think what's important in Kim, this is to your question, is what the article does not do. So, you know, you know, it does not fund the construction or renovation of NEARI school. A future town meeting will need to decide on a project once a feasibility study is completed based on the outcome. And then it does not commit any funding for potential community center at current Woodward School if grade consolidation occurs. So it is just about NEARI. And that is.
You're good?
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
So educational policy, none at this time. Policy development and distribution, none at this time. Personnel items?
It's in your packet.
In the packet. And anything on communications that you'd like to share?
No, so, I mean, I can share very briefly some of the work that we're doing behind the scenes in terms of trying to enhance our communication. So we have contracted with Chris Coran to have a communication session that will take place May 2nd. I'm organizing that behind the scenes. And also Julie Doyle on Rotowet, the range will frame myself a bit of evaluating communication tools. We actually think we have a, our number one choice of communication tool that will potentially take place of one font out. So we are actually getting kind of a focus group of parents and teachers and thinking about how that, does it actually do what the company says it will in terms of communications? And then lastly, the website, so Julie Doyle and Jennifer Tracy, who does the web design, will be, have landed on a template and they're moving forward with kind of taking the template and converting all of our data on our current website for our August 1, launch of their new branded, easy to use, easy to find.
Will that be like, will there be beta testers basically?
Yes, yeah, so I think.
It's a new template, is it a new platform too?
It's the same platform.
Same platform, okay.
I would like to suggest Kim told her to be on the beta test.
So this is a meeting on the 2nd?
So the meeting on the 2nd is an internal meeting in terms of communication strategy, branding and philosophy and approach, so that will take place.
If a school committee member who were interested in attending, would they be barred from the door or would that be something you'd like to see or not appropriate? How do you feel about that?
I think the first initial meeting I would like to have internal.
Keep it internal?
Because I think once we invite a school committee member into the initial conversation, it does change the dynamic of.
The people that are in the meeting.
Even if it's not potential, I think there will be an opportunity after that initial meeting to kind of get a sense of Chris to actually, there's a lot of work to be done and this is a start.
Fair point.
Would you be open to comment on like an agenda?
Yeah, I mean.
Like if you have your agenda?
Yeah, Chris, the person who will be leading, he sets the agenda.
Okay.
So I mean, I can provide a little bit more, I mean, I'm still in the formation process of getting all this together for my second. I need some more time to kind of get all the information together. And once I have it together, I can share that information to the school.
I just want to say that I appreciate this step, this step forward. I think it's going to be like great for the district, but also like great for you and the staff and.
Just to step back a little bit to the appointments that were on the agenda, the staff appointments? Just quick question, so the.
I'm sorry?
The staff appointments?
The personnel.
The personnel portion, but yes, yes.
So there were three of them that just spoke, just went to show their extension until the end of the school year. I was curious, I thought I was reading it wrong. I thought it would be telling me whether or not they're going to come into our 2022 through 2023 year.
Let me just.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it. First one is through this year. Second one is through this year and the third one is also, they're all through this year. Do you read that same one?
Yes, just, maybe Greg, you know, if conversations are being held, that these three people with.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so each one is kind of a unique situation. One appointment is to replace an ESP for a short period of time. Another is science teacher who actually, we have a science teacher returning from a leave. And what we did was instead of having the transition of teacher coming, the science teacher coming, we're actually continuing having the teacher who's been the long-term staff continue with that teacher. So that's that position. And then again, educational support professional we've just hired in the new year. And I think the student support services department is evaluating each of the students' service delivery grids to see what types of positions we'll be moving forward for next year.
The reason I ask is because, you know, you've struggled so much to hire great teachers and so if there was an opportunity to keep those, spread them, you know, into the right places, I mean, all right.
That is our, our hope.
Anything else on that? Okay, so we have some minutes to approve. We have two meetings to approve, they were both virtual meetings. So I would look for a motion to approve the South Grove School Committee's special open meeting on Wednesday, March 2, 2022. And the South Grove School open meeting on Wednesday, March 9, 2022. Do I agree, is some move?
Some move.
Some move by Kim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kamali, is there any discussion on this? So all in favor? Opposed, it's unanimous? And we're on to agenda for next month before we do public comment. You know, we've got the school choice, there's going to be bus updates. New year, so action of officers, what else do anybody does? Let's see, we have.
Town meeting update.
Yes, that'll be right after the town meeting.
Next week.
Yeah, that would be right after the town meeting, won't it? So sure, that makes a lot of sense, actually. Okay, for now, that's it, obviously, if anybody has anything that they're looking to.
Early bang.
Add, you know, bring it up during the month, as long as they have enough free time and you can put it in the schedule. So public comment? See, I thought, I thought, I thought I dealt with this already, but no, yes, yes. Mr. Lit, yes, please.
Well, so I thought I'd add a little bit to the discussion that you had on the ADA report since Roger had called on me about it earlier. First, a disclaimer, I'm not a member of the accessibility committee, I speak for myself. First thing is when you talk about a new website, it's really important to look at accessibility. It's very easy to mess up the accessibility of websites. There's a lot that goes into getting it right. I had some comments when this current one came out that you never addressed. So I think it's important that, you know, you have someone, you know, evaluate it and make sure that, you know, it works with screen readers, it works with speech to text, as well as, you know, it works for everybody else. And then sort of going back to the discussion that you had on the report, the report did have sort of rough categories and priorities associated with it. Those were, from the point of view of the consultant, I don't think that those were done with knowledge of the town or the town situation. So I mean, they're worth looking at, but I wouldn't treat them as absolutes. I'd also add that the goal is not something that you would call shining perfection. I think, you know, the priorities are that first, you want to meet the needs of the people who are participating in the program and the person, people who you can reasonably anticipate would participate in a program. And it's, you know, the standard is reasonable accommodations, it's not, you know, going crazy. And just as sort of one example, you know, from the school context, you know, what's accessible to someone in kindergarten is very different from what's accessible to someone in high school, right? Wheelchair, not wheelchair, you know, any of that stuff is worth thinking about. And I was impressed, you know, when I talked with Keith, Keith at the accessibility committee meeting about the effort that had gone into making accommodations for individual students as opposed to sort of, you know, the shining, you know, global, you know, what you'd want to do if the world was perfect. It's also the case that when it comes to compliance, the most important thing is, you know, knowing where you are and having a plan. And then when you have resources, you apply those resources to the plan in some sort of sensible order. You're not generally, you know, penalized, you know, if no individual is being impacted and you're unable to execute a plan. And one of the other, you know, cases where we have been footnoting things, you know, in the report is where something's up in the air. Like for example, with NEARI or with Woodward or with South Union, it doesn't make sense to invest a lot of money until you understand, you know, to what purpose the building is going to be used and what programs might be in it. So if you have a reasonable explanation for why you're not doing something yet, you're okay. And so I think it's important to understand that as opposed to saying, well, you're either in compliance or you're not. Well, it's a little bit more gray than, than, you know, crisp, you know, bright line black and white, although you can get into bright line conditions. And so finally, I will point out that the accessibility committee does have an open seat. And if there's someone who's interested in participating, they should fill out the citizen activity form on the town website and/or talk with Bonnie Fanna, who's the current chair. Now, that's why I decided to provide the infomercial.
Well, thanks again, thanks for that too. I would entertain, unless we have any other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move. Second.
Second down.
Okay, moved by Jennifer, second by Kamali. It's non-debatable, all in favor? Close, it's unanimous, we are adjourned at 8:39 PM.